So welcome to our fifth annual extended campus town hall process. And you are the first of this year's presentation. So congratulations Knox, you're kicking off our town hall season. As you see, we will be in Kishakton on March the 5th and Pataskala on March the 19th. This will be a very important discussion for us to have with you and to solicit some feedback from you as well. We are launching our brand new strategic plan for COTC. It's the first time in five years we'll be re-engaging in a new strategic plan. As most of you know, they last about a five-year lifecycle. I have been the president now for six years and 34 days. So with that, obviously, we're ready to move into a new cycle. And boy, have things changed over six years. We've all lived through a pandemic together. That was a lot of fun. But that has also kind of changed some of the perspective of where we have to go as an institution, where we are as community members, moving out of that cycle and actually having almost a renewal and somewhat of a rebirth in some ways. So we want to make sure that we share with you what our strategic plan says. What is that five-year focus? What is our concentration? What does it mean to each of our communities in action? And then we're going to do a deeper dive here in Knox. We're going to focus a little bit more specifically on the Knox community. We're going to spend about a half hour kind of talking in generality. And then we're going to get into a 15-minute focus more on Knox itself. And then we're going to turn the tables and ask you to give us some thoughts, some perspectives, some feedback with that as well. But first, let's get into what do we believe about Central Ohio Technical College, about ourselves? What is our focus and what is going to be our kind of laser pinpoint engagement within our communities of service? So here we are again, the fifth annual town hall. We're going to unveil our new strategic plan with you. I love that we call it our bold vision that will guide our work and impact over the next five years. We do think there are some bold elements to it. There is some stretch, goal and design built into it as well. We'll walk you through some of this. This marks an exciting chapter for us. We are very, very pleased to continue to move this process forward. Just making sure that we're on the same page with what our institutional mission and vision. Our mission has remained the same and steadfast for 50 years. And our Board of Trustees, we have some members of our board here today. They have reaffirmed that over this next five-year period. To meet the technical education and training needs of students and employers in the area. It's very straightforward. Our focus is on industry. It is on workforce engagement. It is on helping students achieve a viable livelihood through employment with meaning and purpose. Our vision is empowering lives through accessible education. We aim to transform students and communities and advance regional workforce readiness. This is who we are. It is what we do. We don't do this in isolation. We do this in partnership with many of you in this room today. Some of you are active partners. It was funny, Kathy Greenwich and I had a conversation earlier this week about some collaborative notions that we're doing. We have industry partners. I know we have our friends from Debold right here at D'Ullis as well. Our mayor, we have some collaborative engagements going on together as well. So very excited about what this means. But we want to walk through this process of where do we see ourselves going and why? Not just the what, but also the why together. The hallmarks of COTC, when we did a reflective review with our communities of service. So we asked our internal community members, obviously, our faculty, staff, our students. We asked our community supporters. We asked our collaborators. What are the hallmarks and traits of COTC that we need to emphasize and continue to elaborate on? Our focus on technical education and affordability. That will be our number one focus. We are a technical education institution. We do general education as a facet of what we do. Candidly, about 5% of our students are in a transferability process where they're looking to move into a baccalaureate degree. 95% of our students are looking at a career focus. They have a finite end and goal for who they are and what they want to do. That's our mission. That's our purpose. We want to create a community and family atmosphere. We want people to be very comfortable in all of our campus locations. As a reminder, we do have four. We talked about the three extended campuses and then our cost-share co-located system in Newark as well. We want all of those campuses to be very engaging and very comfortable. You might have noticed when you came in that we have a COTC cares campaign going on over the last two weeks, where we're just reminding our students that we are there for them. We want them to remind each other what they're here to do and we give them free stuff. It's amazing what students will do for cookies and a t-shirt. It is quite amazing, but we appreciate that immensely. We want to make sure that we continue to have exceptional faculty and staff that lead this charge. We have some of the best faculty members in their fields of study. We need to maintain that and we need to be competitive in terms of how we reward that system. Our staff is no different. We need to make sure we leverage that. Strong partnership with the Ohio State University. Many of you may know that we have a very unique relationship. We actually met all the co-located presidents in the state of Ohio. All technical colleges are co-located with an institution of higher education that is a Division One type of institution. Four of those are with Ohio State. We are one of those. There is also co-located with Kent State. And there is also co-location with Ohio University. We are the only ones that take that into a very deep dive. Not only do we co-locate, which means we share a campus environment. We cost share or we work with our faculty, with our staff predominantly, that they work for both institutions simultaneously. We have 82 members that work for both institutions. The next largest that any of the co-located is five. So if that tells you the difference between those two. Also, every one of the co-located systems accepts ours, except ours. They have differentiation of physical structures. So if you go to OSU Lima, OSU Lima has building A, B, and C. Their co-located partner, Rhodes State, has building E, F, G, and H. All of our facilities are integrated. We use Founder's Hall, which is now Hodges Hall, at 8 o'clock for our biology class. There will be a 10 o'clock OSU class there for history and so on and so forth. It's a very different relationship. We save the state of Ohio $1.5 million annually on efficiencies. So we're not duplicating processes and such. That's a leverage that we will continue to manifest. Student-centered support services and focus on success. This candidly is a focus area that we are highlighting this year. I say we've always been a student supportive environment. Now we want to be student focused and student driven. Whatever students need to be successful, that's what we have to focus on. We need to make sure what the obstacles are that they need to overcome. We need to put support, support systems in place to assist within that. You're going to see some of that. Strong leadership and positive presence. It's very important that we have a direct presence in each of our communities of service. Here is something that I can unveil to you today. Many of you know that historically, we've had at times individuals that worked directly on our campus environments, on our extended campuses, where they might lead that campus itself. We moved away from that several, several years ago and have kind of lost that perspective of a leader who is actively connected to what's happening in the community. We can't afford to do all of our campus locations in that. But we have dedicated now a level of executive leadership, working directly with our provost. And our provost is here, Dr. Greg Fairencheck. Greg, wave it everybody. Greg loves when I do that. He absolutely does. But it'll be a dean for strategic partnerships. One of their responsibilities are all of our extended campus networks. They will be on these campuses regularly and consistently. They will be here on a monthly, if not bi-weekly basis, on each campus to delve deeply into the community, making sure that we are connected at that. They will also be working with our partners in our gateway process for college credit plus engagement to ensure that we have a high level of executive leadership in that. When we talk about our work with the career and technical centers, we want to make sure that we give it the emphasis that is due and needs to happen. And then class size, we want to maintain a small class size and favorable staff to student ratio. Now, let's not kid ourselves. This is still a business. We are in the business of higher education. I can't have ratios of one Diane's teaching for me and she has a class of four. That does not work because we would be out of business if that was the case. You can't afford that. But we don't want one to 28. We want one to 15. Where it's a small class size, you can deliver, you know each and every one of your students in your class. You can actively engage with them. One of the things that we're going to talk about later is making sure we get to that optimal size without losing that interpersonal dynamic. So these are the hallmarks that we want to make sure we continue to emphasize or we elaborate on. Makes sense so far? Okay. The values of what COTC stands for, and this is what we heard mostly from our communities. Dependable expertise. We need to trust that you have the expertise as faculty members to deliver the substance of what you're espousing. So if I'm going to become a healthcare practitioner, I better make sure that each and every one of my faculty members and the staff that's involved in have a high level of expertise in that area. Dynamic engagement. We want this to be an engaged process. The last thing you need is a bunch of people who are nodding off in your classes because they're not engaged in the subject matter. Inclusive collaboration. We want to be very inclusive in who we are, representing everyone's opportunity to find their pathway in higher ed. Unwavering integrity. We will never be in the front page of the Newark Advocate or the Columbus Dispatch or fill in the blank because the only reason we'll be there is for something positive. We will make sure that integrity is our first and foremost value. An innovative excellence and empathic compassion. That's what we have to do. In order to be the institution that we can be, we have to live up to those values. So I'm setting the stage because you're like, this is lovely. This is good. What you're going to do? We're almost there, I promise you. Here are our goals and priorities over the next five years. This is getting into the substance of what are we going to deliver and what does this mean? So you can see the four priorities. We're trying to keep these succinct and manageable. Now, there are goals under each of the priorities and I want to share those with you. But priority one, industry-aligned technical education. Priority number one. We have to make sure that we're working with our business partners and our business community members to deliver what they need. What do you need, Michelle, when you have a myriad of opportunities for people in your sphere of influence and you have a large array of opportunities? What kind of expertise do our students need to have to be successful in your industry? And how are we responding to that? Fill in the blanks with many of our partners in here. The second one is we wanted to be student-centered in our support and we'll get to that. I'll walk you through that. Number three, partnership, engagement and collaboration across lines. And number four, effectiveness and financial sustainability. Sure you're not surprised about that. If we're not financially sustainable, all of these lofty goals and aspirations are not going to happen. But we think that we're prepared for each and every one of these. Now I have a cheat sheet because some of this, oh, I shouldn't say cheat sheet in higher ed. That's a bad thing. I have notes that will help us with. So let's go into a little bit deeper dive in each of those priority areas. So our first one, industry-aligned technical education. We want to tailor technical programs to meet the specific workforce needs of local businesses and industries, ensuring that graduates possess the skills and expertise required to excel in each service region's evolving job market. We have a very wide-ranging service region. Remember, Licking, Knox and Kishakton counties are our science service area. There are opportunities and obstacles in each one of those communities, but they're different. We have to know them. We have to help our students find a way to engage in success features in each one. So with this industry-aligned technical education, what are your goals for that? Our first one, to collaborate closely with local businesses and stay attuned to regional employment. To develop and offer new programs and certificates that equip students with the skills and knowledge necessary to thrive. So here's the thing. Coming out of COVID, we had to reinvest in our past programming. We lost almost 20% of our student population over the two and a half year of COVID impact. Imagine in your businesses and sectors, if you lost 20% of your service partners. We have been able to rebuild to that capacity. We're almost back to previous levels and we're looking to surpass that. So we wanted to rebuild into those. So our traditional offerings, we needed to also look what's happening in the market that we need to meet and deliver successfully. If you look in our healthcare components, respiratory therapy. We knew coming out of COVID, what is in more demand and need than respiratory therapy? There wasn't much of any. We had our healthcare partners help us with that. We actually started that program this year. So we actually right now have students in that pipeline and are building an even larger pipeline for next year. We also knew that our student nurses, they were doing very well in their fields, but they had a finite cap of what they could do at COTC. We now have our RN to BSN program. Students need a baccalaureate degree in nursing to be ultimately successful and move into their field. They can now complete that at COTC. That's just in healthcare alone. When we looked at advanced manufacturing, we have a myriad of partners in advanced manufacturing. It is a very good field to engage in. But it's also one of those fields that's hard to wrap your head around. What do I do? What's the process? What will I be engaged in? Because a lot of what advanced manufacturers do are a little bit secretive because they have to do it and not let other people know how to do it. So we understand that and it's opening the door wide enough to ensure our students know it as what they can do with it and how they engage in it. So we have expanded our portfolio in both engineering and IT. Those will be very hot commodities over the next five-year cycle. Working with advanced manufacturing requires engineering knowledge and often IT capacity. You all may have heard the state announce that in Pickway County, there is the new opportunity for people to engage more in combat-related situations. It is defense contracting, sometimes related to drone technologies. We have a drone program and had a drone program. We may need to reinvest and rethink how we engage in that for opportunities for students in this region. Doesn't mean that we're going to focus on just that. It needs to be a part of our portfolio. So making sure that we are industry-aligned is going to be paramount. Having the conversations, doing outreach to each and every one of our communities, active listening sessions, using our advisory groups. Every one of our academic programs has a local community advisory group so that we know what's hot in the field, what has to happen, what needs to change. Candidly, our IT program went over a major overhaul. We're still in the midst of some of that because it needed to be brought up into the current capacities of the world order. You know how rapidly things are changing. Cybersecurity, AI work, that is all hot and necessary. It is not something that our former faculty were really versed in. It is what our new faculty certainly are. So making sure this industry alignment is key and paramount is so important to us. So we will be having conversations with you all locally, making sure that your needs are understood and can be met through COTC. We are doing a comprehensive analysis of current academic programs for viability and alignment with our workforce needs and demands. We will enhance existing academic programs to foster continuous quality improvement and maintain faculty expertise and relevance. There have been times, ladies and gentlemen, that we've had to actually say to ourselves, we don't have it. We don't have that expertise and relevance. We're going to go get it. That IT renovation and rethinking was a perfect example of that. We didn't have anybody in respiratory therapy. That's not a program that we knew about. We had to go out and find them and bring them and convince them that you want it to be in academia now because they make good money out there in that field, you can imagine. What we found for most of our hospitals, they were having to hire traveling respiratory therapists. They are very, very expensive. They would rather invest some monies upfront with us to create a pathway and a current system than to hire those individuals that they, and I will use a quote from our board chair, Rob Montagnes. He is the CEO of the Licking Memorial Health Systems. He said, there's a difference between owners and renters. And in our organizations, we have both. The owners are the people who deep dive and invest in the organization. Renters who are there because they're doing a job for you and they could do a good job, but they're not invested. They're going to do the job to make the salary, move on, and they may or may not be with you in two years. When you create systems and pathways for owners, it's very, very different. People who do traveling services are renters. They're there to do a job and get paid and move along. So our job is to create large systems of owners with each and every one of you. Does this make sense for priority one? All right. Priority number two. This is our student-centered support. Bolster comprehensive support systems and resources to address the diverse needs of students and foster holistic student success and wellbeing. I would say to you that our Knox and Kishakton campuses are a bit ahead of this game simply because of the creation of the PROMIS program. Recognizing that one significant obstacle to many students is financial. That I can't even think about overcoming anything else because I don't think I can afford higher education. Everything I hear in the public media says that it's a very expensive proposition. And what's my return on that investment? We've already started here in Kishakton engaging in that process. Our students have participated in and we auto-award those programs here in Kishakton. You don't have to apply for them. We look and see if you meet that criterion, you get that array. Many, many of our students here already take advantage of that. But we also wanted to expand upon that. Tailor student resources and support systems to meet the diverse needs of our student body and ensure students' academic success, psychological wellbeing, holistic wellness, including strengthening advising, bolstering academic support, expanding access to scholarships and financial assistance, addressing critical areas as mental health support, staffing classes during off-peak and at extended campuses. This is not necessarily something that is, it's not a new process. It's one that takes time, energy and resources to achieve. We have dedicated ourselves over the last two-year cycle and moving into the third year. This is a priority for us. Put your money where your mouth is. We have a success coaching system now that every one of our students has a success coach assigned to them. If they start to stumble, there's somebody there to address. So if Bruce is, he's missed class over the last two weeks. He was a good student. He was always there, but the last two weeks, we haven't seen him. Our faculty are going to let us know about that. And our success coaches are going to call Bruce and say, Bruce, what's going on? How are things? Bruce might say, you know what? My car is in disrepair. I actually had a $600 bill on this and I can't pay that. Guess what? We have an emergency fund source for you. We're going to help you with that. All you need to do is fill this out to make sure that it's legit and then we're going to help pay that for you. Get back in class, Bruce. Let's get you back in. That's a system that we have really engaged in. That's a game changer. We have found that was it 10% of our students were not receiving any sort of grade or any sort of credit in their first semester?
It was higher than that.
Even higher. So imagine. Your first semester as a college first-year student, you go through an entire semester and have earned nothing. No credits. You have walked out of here with debt, most likely. Now, it doesn't mean that you did. You might have been in one of our scholarship programs, but likely that you have not earned anything. We engage in this process to make sure that we impact that. That has significantly decreased in a two and a half-year period. We want to see it down to zero, candidly, that everybody is achieving some measure. Sometimes people have life issues. We just need to know about them. Let's help you withdraw so you're not going to fit, find yourself in a whole semester's worth of activity and receive nothing for it. So this is very important to us. We recognize our students have very interesting lives. The majority of our students are part-time. And why do you think that is? Because they're working. They have to actually make sure that they're supplying the goods and services to themselves and their families. Life gets in the way sometimes of your goals. Our job is to make sure that we engage with you to overcome whatever those life obstacles are. And even if you need to step out, we don't want you to drop out. You may need to step out for a semester, take care of some things. Let's get you back in there the next semester to finish up that goal. Item number three, our priority, partnership, engagement and collaboration. Foster meaningful partnerships aimed at enhancing educational pathways, promoting workforce development for the region's prosperity, improving learning environments and meeting the financial needs of students. One of the things that we alluded to with our PROMIS program, that is a collaboration, partnership and engagement process. That happened with us. That happened with individuals, some of which are here today, with organizations, some of which are here today. We appreciate and value you greatly. That's made a positive impact. That's a collaboration that we want to continue to expand and leverage. Some of the other things we want to do is champion the commitment to the collaborative partnership. My pages keep sticking together. Between the college and our organizational partners, like our career and technical centers. For so long, the two-year college system has had adversarial relationships with partners that need to be engaged. Our career and technical centers are fantastic at what they do. And sometimes we have to leverage with one another. Candidly, years ago, and Kathy and I kind of laugh about this. We really had a workforce arm that was doing things for non-credit types of services. We moved away from that because candidly, our career and technical centers did better. We wanted to leverage with them, not against them. And that's an example of what we are doing right now and it's going well. We just need to do it better. And I keep looking at Kathy. Kathy's coming to talk to our cabinet. We're going to do a retreat and give us updates on their strategic vision and design and how do we interact between them. That fits this paradigm. That's exactly what we want to do across different lines. We want to enhance collaboration and partnership between the college and area high schools and career and technical centers, focusing on initiatives such as CCP, career exploration and improving communication to provide students with better pathways and resources to higher ed. We want to create more partnerships with business and industry to move robustly and serve as workforce development partners to help community leaders, economic development partners and local governments to attract new companies to our region. That's very important to us. We need to be a catalyst for economic development. You have economic development partners. This is what they focus on. We need to bring the workforce education connection to them and say, when you're going out and talking to prospective businesses, we want to be side by side with you. We want to hear what they need and we want to create those pathways for them. So we need to be assertive in that process and responsive to it as well. If our friends are out there and they're talking to major industry partners about relocating here in the Knox community area. And Julia comes to us and says, hey, they need to have a robust IT infrastructure and they needed to do something with data centers. Let's talk about that. How can we create that system here so that students can finish that process here? Start and finish in that process. That is one example that's actually legit. We know data centers are popping up in our service region extensively. We've actually talked to Microsoft and they want us to create an internal data center design system. We need to know a little bit more from them about what that means and are they going to put some money and skin in that game? Because they need to. But we also need to do that as well. We need to do that in concert with one another and in collaboration. Finally, and you're not going to be again surprised with this. Priority number four, effectiveness and financial sustainability. Ensure the long-term financial sustainability of the college by improving organizational efficiencies and allocating resources in a strategic and consistent manner. We just had our audit done as a complete college. And kudos to David Brohardt and his team because it was a fairly seamless audit. We got one managerial note and that was only because there was a little bit of a system gap that we actually knew occurred and told them about. So and David's team had already fixed that. But the state of the college is good in terms of its financial wellbeing. But we live in volatile times. This is very interesting, what's going to happen at the state level in relationship to higher education. There are a lot of competing interests and forces out there. We live this every day and some of you may be aware of something called Senate Bill 1. We're really attuned to what that means. And what does that mean about state funding? What does that mean about compliance and expectation? We want to make sure that we are not only compliant, we are leveraging those systems for even more effectiveness, that we are meeting those standards and surpassing them in some ways. So we do know right now that there are a lot of forces that are swirling. There are some federal systems. You remember when President Trump said, we're going to freeze all federal grants? Most of us in higher ed kind of had a little, little like, excuse me? What's happening? What does that mean? Does that mean federal financial aid? What all does that actually entail? But it was somewhat of a wake-up call too, for many of us to say, we need to know exactly what we have in terms of federal grants and connections outside of financial aid. Every institution of higher education, if they are accredited, are going to have some relationship to federal financial aid. And that will take care of itself in many ways. But we also have some federal grants that enable us to do some of what you heard about student support services. We have some of our staff members that are on federal grant systems. We need to make sure, how do we move them off of those? If that were to dry up, how do we self-sustain? So we're looking at those sorts of issues as well. Some of the other things in here, and I'll read this verbatim to you. This isn't going to surprise you. Again, since the COVID pandemic in 2020, enrollment in two-year colleges across the country has declined, including at COTC. Prior to the pandemic, COTC's enrollment was 3471. And remember that number? This was in the fall. 3471. And despite recent increases, overall enrollment remains below pre-pandemic levels, resulting in resulting in a budget imbalance. Shrinking off on-campus student presence has resulted in underutilization of facilities. Remember what happened to higher education during the pandemic? For the students that were apart and stayed apart, how were they taking courses? Online. At COTC, pre-pandemic, we had one academic pathway that had an online completion and that was business. That was it. We actually offered online classes, but it was maybe 20% of our portfolio. In today's world order, it is almost 50% of our portfolio of students electing to take their coursework from an online modality. It's not how we were designed. If you really think about COTC as a technical institution, we are experiential in nature. Students have to have some hands-on engagement. They have to prove that they are versed in whatever their disciplines are. They have to demonstrate it. They have to show it. There are different ways to do that. It doesn't mean that online modality isn't important, but securing the proper balance between those is essential. Shrinking on-campus student presence has resulted, as I said, in underutilization of facilities, particularly in our Knox and Koshockton campuses. Our Koshockton County student participation at COTC continues to decline overall and the number of students attending classes on our Koshockton campus are at unsustainable levels. While CCP enrollment growth continues as an opportunity, these students continue with COTC after high school at low percentages. So we have a large, robust CCP population. College Credit Plus is about 45% of our overall student enrollment at all of our campus locations. So those are students duly enrolled. They're in high school, taking college-level courses. That's pretty true across the two-year college spectrum. What's important is for those students to see a pathway to COTC upon their graduation from high school. Many of our students actually get a credential during that process and that's great. Julie was one of those individuals during our process and we love this College U program for business with our career center here. It's fantastic. It's funny, none of our other partners can replicate this. They have a secret sauce and a magic formula that works for this organization with our partnership that no one can seem to tap. That's their problem. We'll work with them. Now, having said that, what we want to make sure is that students see COTC as their college of choice following their high school initiative. At one point, we had about 3% of our students matriculating to us post-high school. That has more than doubled. But when 6% is we are doubling, that's a problem. So it is our goal to get that up to 20 to 25%, candidly, so that students complete what they started in a way and see COTC as the preferred provider. So financially, all these things are very important. One of the reasons I'm kind of teeing this up for you all, we had a little bit of this conversation as a club the last time we gathered. This building is wonderful. This building is beautiful. This building is significantly underutilized. We are not in the same level of concern that we are in Koshockton. That building is far more underutilized and is bigger than this. Plus, when you look, and I'm trying not to do comparisons, but I need to give you the picture. When you look at Koshockton, we have a 45,000-square-foot building. That's a good size. It was the old Roscoe Village Inn. It was a hotel. We have 69 students that attend classes in that building. 69 students in a 45... You almost get 1,000 square feet per student. That is not good. That is not a financially sustainable model. We are actually, right now, we have that facility on the commercial real estate market. We don't want to leave it, but we can't utilize all that space. We are losing money significantly every year, just keeping the lights on and it's staffed. We are looking to do things like condo minimize it. Not necessarily putting condos in that you live in, but if, say, Michelle, you decided you needed an office area off your campus environment, you could actually own a part of our campus with us. You could be on the third floor and own 1/8 of that building and you're a partner. We would love to have you there. I don't think you want to, but you could be there. You could be there as part of that. We're very attuned to and we would like to stay in that physical resource, but we have to have partnership in order to do it. We could sell that building outright and then move and then find a different position to live in. And we're not leaving the Koshockton community, but it's too big and too robust. Here, we have a smaller version. Remember, that's 45,000 square feet. This is roughly 30,000 square feet. We have twice as many students attending here. About 122, I think we decided, right now, this semester, 122 students taking classes physically here. But we have almost 500 students from the Knox community attending COTC. So our picture is much more rosy, but you don't want this building underutilized. We want to maximize the amount of connections and community engagement that are here. But candidly, ladies and gentlemen, we don't want to do it for free because again, financially, we want to make sure it is a viable partnership. We would love to bring in collaborators who fit our kind of mission and purpose. They can rent space here. They can actually have space. They could be a co-owner in some of this as well. This building does not align itself as easily to parcel up as the Koshockton campus does because it was a hotel. So think about those individual rooms are very easy to kind of creep back into individual rooms and may even have things like water and those sorts of... The Koshockton community is very interested in thinking about privatizing apartments there. To be honest, I did not realize, in Roscoe Village, they only have about a dozen places to live in the village above retail. They're all full. And so there's a thought from the community that we're exploring right now. Could the third and fourth floors become privatized apartments? Could happen. Very intriguing. I don't think that would allow itself here to do something like that. I don't think people want to live in the basement. And that's kind of the area that we would see as a possible adaptive change. So with that, as we talked about each and every one of those goals and priorities, how are we going to measure that? What are we really focused on in each of those areas? I'm sure you're not surprised. Enrollment is going to be one of our first key performance indicators. Our students are rolling with the college in those various programs of service. What's that CCP matriculation? Are we getting that up to that 20% expectation mark? COTC share of enrollment of degree-seeking students from our service area at Ohio's two-year colleges. We are collaborative approach. There are 22 active two-year colleges in the state of Ohio. We are collaborators, but we're also competitors. There are some of our two-year college brethren who actually are utilizing their entree points into the Knox County as well. That's their right. They can do that. We want to make sure that we're offering what is necessary at an affordable level to be the first priority for all students and employers in this area. Retaining our students is as important as enrolling them. It's one thing for you to come in the door. It's another thing that, man, you found your place and your purpose and you're going to finish whatever your goal was. If it's a one-year certificate, we get you there with you and you're good to go. Get directly in there. Two-years associates, whatever that might be. Might be in our baccalaureate programs. Just so you know, as a reminder, we have two baccalaureate programs now. So very excited about, both are actually doing well. The graduation rates are key indicators for us. Retention and enrollment will lead to graduation. And the one-year post-graduation employment outcome. I can say this is a point of pride. We have one of the highest percentages of this in the state for the amount of our students that are employed in their field within six months of graduation. Candidly, ladies and gentlemen, most of ours are employed before they graduate because they've already done experiential work. They're going to, Michelle, and hey, you're trying them out. And if you like them, you're probably already, I'd like to offer you this position. When are you done? We do tell many of our students, particularly in engineering, you have to finish because they will be employed before they're done and we have to make sure they come back and at least finish what they started. So that credential is theirs forever and hopefully will benefit the partner in that. And then finally, the financial viability within that system as well. All right, so talked at you a lot and I know that. What I want to make sure that we do is now look at this Knox campus. That is one of our goal measures in this financial viability. Pursue partnerships and explore other innovative options that design with our strategic... That, excuse me, that align with our strategic goals and community engagement efforts to maximize the use of the Knox campus facility itself. So this is one of our key goals under that financial viability. Here's our challenge and we've outlined a little bit of this. We have underutilized space. It's a beautiful facility and it's well-kept. This is not in disrepair in any way, shape, or form. Brian and his team do a very good job with that. There is a high building cost. We spend, and David ran these numbers for me even as of today. This building costs the institution about $252,000 a year to keep the lights on and it's staffed. So you imagine to meet that 252,000, we have to have a number of students that engage with the process, return on investment. With the number of that 122, that's about meeting half of that financial viability. We need about 250 students that are actively in this environment and/or other partners that are collaborating with us. We are seeking revenue-generating partnerships that support operations, not just space use. So I don't need necessarily people just coming in like, well, I can utilize this room twice a month. Well, I don't want to pay for it. That's not necessarily what we're looking for. We're looking for people who want to invest within it. If this meets your space need as a partner, let's look at that opportunity. What does that mean? What are we doing? The timeline. Have met with several potential partners already, but we began a more aggressive search in the spring. So we have had some conversations with prospective partners. This is still a business proposition and sometimes that price tag was a little bit too high for them and we understand that. But we wanted to make sure that those conversations are robust. If any of you individually think that that's something you want to explore, if any of you know of other individuals, organizations that could have a place here, let us know that as well. The space analysis, we consider how we can potentially work with that space. For example, could the basement be separated? Our basement area could be self-contained. Now, one of the things Brian has already shared with us, there are no restrooms in the basement because you can imagine it's a basement and things have to go up. So it doesn't mean it can't happen, but we would need to look if somebody decided, I think I can utilize that space and I'd like to utilize that space. We would work with them if that was a necessity, to have a necessity. That was a pun, everyone. I just wanted you to know that. And then the community exploration. Open to all potential partners. Will consider education partners first, including other higher education providers themselves. May use a Realtor service. We do have a Realtor service in Koshockton. It is a very active pursuit there, candidly. This is what I would call a more passive pursuit. We want to and need to make sure this billing is maximized. In our Potasko campus, we have the exact opposite. It's only 15,000 square feet and we have about 400 students in it. We cram students in that thing. So we would love to cram students in here. Again, we will not stop pursuing enrollment, but enrollment generation isn't necessarily our biggest issue here. It's enrollment in this facility. So those are both our timeline, our space analysis, and our community exploration. That's supposed to say questions. So questions. What we wanted to do was leave this additional time for community engagement, community conversation. You've heard a lot of stuff today. We've basically told you all sorts of things about what our vision is, what our expectation and goals over the next five years are going to be, where we're going to put our energies and concentrate our resources. We've also told you what we need to do here in Knox as a core and a centered component. What are your thoughts, your perspectives, your reactions to what you heard? You're our community investors and that's what these are supposed to do, is give more forum. We are supposed to give you information, but we are supposed to seek reflections and perspectives from you as well. And there's no right or wrong. We just value each and every one of you. So I am interested to see what your thoughts are. Bruce?
How many students from Knox County actually go to other campuses, especially at campus? And are there programs that are offered there that aren't offered here? Their programs could be offered here or they're just not financially feasible? What's the reasoning that they're not coming to this building?
Bruce asks a very good question. And as a good, solid leader, you know when you're out of your league and you go and you talk to your enrollment director.
So Dr. Barryhead indicated we have close to 500 students from Knox County who do attend COTC. Percentage of those are CCP students, so taking courses in their high school. Because we have limitations of programming here, I would say those that are not attending here are likely attending our Newark campus and they're doing our sonography, our ultrasound, our respiratory therapy. We have students coming for engineering and IT. Those are some of the program areas that we are looking at and assessing for potentially bringing out to this area. Right now, it's a matter of equipment and space and clinical seats and those types of things. But I would say the majority are coming to Newark. There is a small percentage that travel to Koshockton. Usually that's related to nursing. There wasn't enough openings in our program here. They got accepted to Koshockton, so they're traveling to Koshockton, but they typically end up transferring back to this campus.
So Bruce, the other thing that we have to do is ensure that it's a cart and horse situation. We want to make sure we've done our due diligence of assessing what are those program areas that can be completed here that have viability? So if we decide we're bringing our full engineering program here, that we know that there are significant opportunities, but we want to build the infrastructure to support that. We did somewhat of that at the original inception to the building and it did not fly. So we want to ensure that if that's what we design with our industry providers and advanced manufacturing, that we have some sort of a workforce generation capacity mutually, that we're building that student pipeline to fill that. The worst thing that happens is we build this and there are four students. There are six students. Those aren't viable. Candidly, we have a rule of 10. 10 is a minimum that you can actually break even on your process. We try to make sure that's more 10 or 15, 18, 20. We don't have very large classrooms on purpose but we need to make sure that it at least meets that minimum viability. We've also run some things like in our nursing capacity here. Some have flown very well. Some have we've had to cancel. So we want to make sure, again, if we're bringing a concentration, if it's healthcare-related, that it is soup to nuts and you can finish it here, that viable pathway. I would tell you, when we've done assessments in the community, the three areas of concentration, healthcare, engineering, and IT. Probably doesn't surprise you, but those are all very viable opportunities here. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't come here to do a police academy on a three-year cycle because you need that at times, but you don't need it every year. There's not enough capacity to fill. That same thing could happen with early childhood education. Those are cyclical processes. But those standing ones like Bruce asked, to complete, we would need to build that with our industry partners. Very good question, sir. Appreciate that. Questions, thoughts? Sir?
Regarding the space in the building, other than the basement, what are the other spaces that you're looking to fill? There's classrooms, offices, availability, other than just certain hours of the day, that type of thing?
Well, I think, I would say that we're open to any space in the building. We've got some areas like back here, for instance, that are originally designed to be administrative spaces. Perhaps those could be utilized. Portions of the second floor, I think, could also be segmented. Again, the basement, I think, has a lot of potential as well. As Dr. Barry mentioned, the restrooms are an issue, but anything can be overcome, right? So I mean, I think there's ample opportunities for the building with just a little bit of creativity.
Appreciate that.
If somebody's using the basement, for example, would they have access to the restrooms on this floor?
I think that's a possibility, sure.
They absolutely could. Now, here's the thing, Mark. When we've had some conversations with other education partners, K through 12 partners in particular, they have an interest in utilizing some of our space, but they have security demands. They have to keep their students self-contained. They couldn't have random people coming to use the restroom, per se. You know, they have to kind of isolate them. Doesn't mean it can't happen, but you really have to be very strategic on how you do that. Are certain floors cut off? You know, they only have access one way in, right? Doesn't mean it can't happen, but we'd have to look at that. But to, and Brian is our superintendent of facilities, so that's why I handed him the mic. You're probably like, does this man know anything? But with that, there isn't necessarily a sacred cow unless it's something like a health lab that we have to utilize, that we need for our nursing components and such, that we really can't trade off of. But doing administrative focus, other areas of lab space that aren't designated exclusive use, we could definitely look at that as well. Now, again, we don't have, have to be careful. I can't sell everything that we have. We still need to deliver what we need to deliver and deliver it well. So it would be looking holistically, but depending on what that individual organization needed.
Have you kind of figured out what the cost per square foot would be?
David, cost per square foot? David, cost per square foot? We haven't done that analysis completely, Mark. In fact, what we did in Koshockton, we kind of backed up when we hired a realtor, a legal team, and also a construction guy to come in and take a look at our facility and help us figure out some of these questions. So that's probably all in the spring. I mentioned the late spring, we probably get some people onboard to kind of take a look, help us kind of look at that. In Koshockton, we're looking close to $12 a square foot, which is a pretty expensive rate, but that's what we're kind of looking at down there. But again, we haven't found it yet either. I appreciate that. And that's something, Mark, depending on interest, we can expedite that process if necessary. We also want to make sure that that infrastructure is local members. The more we're looking at a construction firm and such, that there are people who work and live here. So appreciate the question. Yes, ma'am?
So tutoring is a big part of keeping retention and keeping students like access to graduation and stuff.
Yes.
Well, my thing is, there's the anticipated decrease of a lot of tutors, and right now, we're not fully meeting the needs of some of the students as it is. With that anticipated decrease, is there anything like we can do to focus on meeting those needs of students so that they can get to graduation?
So the question was, and again, remember that student-centered support. Tutoring is one of those concentration areas of critical need. Now, I would tell you that we have expanded our tutoring capacity, but the demand continues to exceed the supply. What we're trying to do is look at, can we allocate even more resource to that as a concentrated effort? So, and we're starting to look at some other, like online services too, to supplement the individual, one-on-one type of tutoring, the small group, and then look to provide other arrays of service within it. One of the areas that we used to do that we are also looking, can we also do peer-to-peer tutoring by hiring some of our own students to supplement that? Right now, we do mostly professional-based tutoring. Doesn't mean that we are close to any of those processes. So particularly at our extended campuses, that might be an even better way to go. And if we do decide, so if Terry says to me, yes, we want to expand our engineering component, we would look to expand in those academic disciplines too. So knowing that engineering is going to be in one of those higher-volume components, do we have a tutoring array in that subject area? Same within healthcare and such. So yes, you're right, but we are looking to invest in different ways to supplement and even expand that tutoring. So I appreciate that question very much. Ma'am, I know you in the back.
Hi. So I know you're looking for longer-term, more of permanent tenants or partners who could help alleviate the space issue here, the lack of usage of the space, but would you entertain or are you entertaining one-time uses? I can think of some organizations that I'm part of where, you know, we're frequently looking for a location for an after-hours event. Saturday mothers' brunch, Joura, an evening meeting that's open to the public from 4:00 to 6:00 or something like that. And there are a few places, obviously, in the community, but they're limited.
Sure.
And sometimes they're either booked, or they might be pricey, and obviously there would be a cost to it. Is that even something you'd bother to entertain because it's not going to give you long-term, you know?
Right, right. No, I appreciate that. And candidly, Alice asks a very good question. That is something that we do on a small scale at this point. We are not adverse to it, but we also have a staffing minimization. We only have a couple of staff here at any time, so they have to move stuff around and set the space up and such. But yes, yes, that is something we would like to look to supplement. It wouldn't be the priority, but we would be open to that, and we have some really good people that work here on our staff. But I would tell you that that would be phase two or priority number two, but we're not adverse to that at all. Are you okay with that, David? David was watching. He was looking at me, he's like, what's he going to say? What's he about to say? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Is it appropriate that you share some of the conversations that you have had with the types of space use that you have been considering?
Sure, sure. Yeah, we've had conversations with partners like the ESC. They're looking to potentially relocate from where they currently are because our friends at the Career Center, they need space, and that's a good thing. But they're a user that they could actually use that space. What they pay to access with the Career Center, we would like them to pay six times that amount if they were to come this direction. And so it's a cost containment issue for them. That doesn't make necessarily sense for them. For us, at this point, we're starting, we still need to supplement that income generation, and that's what we would have charged basically a third party, no matter who they were. So until we've had a deeper dive to explore beyond that, if, again, we don't have any other takers, we may go back to them and say, do we have a bargain deal for you? We can make it three times what you're paying as opposed, and they still may not be interested in that. So it's, again, it's that balance, the delicate balance, because we don't want to price gouge anybody. That's not what we're looking to do. But I just told you, it's $252,000, and we're making about $125,000 to supplement that now. That's not a good business process. Now, if you're business acumen, you all know that. In Koshockton, it's far worse, far, far worse. That's why we've had to intercede in a very different way. Here, we just know it can get better, and we can work with our partners to do so. But that's an example of one of the explorations that we've already had. And as you heard from David, that's the administrative spaces here in the back that could be aligned for a group like that who doesn't need an enormous amount of space, but they have several members of their team who need a working environment that could even share like a front desk and a reception type of area. And so we're open to that. Sir, my friend.
Is it possible for some of us after this to go see the basement space so that we can help vision?
Oh, we are more than happy to show you around the building. Yes, yes. And the thing about the building, and I love it, it's a nice building. Every one of the individual rooms are in very good shape. You're not going to see ceiling tiles that have mold. I mean, that's, this is a nice facility. So yes, we will show you, and we can even tell you what some of that has been in the past. Some of that's been utilized in different types of capacities. So some has an infrastructure for, if you decide you want to put large-scale equipment in this room that's directly beneath us, it can do that. It has done that before. So absolutely, we are happy to show you that and anything else in the building as well. I appreciate the question. Sir?
There used to be engineering tech in the basement.
Yes.
So where is engineering tech now? Is it no longer here in this building?
So engineering tech as a full-blown program like that is not. But we also redefine engineering. Used to, we had so many different segments of it. If you wanted to do civil, if you want to do mechanical, if you want to do electrical. And the problem is, when we talk to our partners, they're like, look, I need a generalist who knows a little bit about that, but that we can train specifically for. What we found, the generalist and the electrical were the ones in hot demand, and that continues to be the case. Even our semiconductor manufacturing program is based off the electrical. It's 80% of our electrical engineering with four classes specific to semiconductor. And just so you all know, because people ask me, what the hell is happening with Intel? What does this mean to you? You know, we went hot and heavy with them because we had to. We were told we needed to do that. The good thing is, we were also smart, though, in terms of our process. That transferability of those degrees are almost unlimited. It's based out of the engineering model of the electrical engineer. So we have students already placed in things like illuminate, aerial. I even hope that we've got some with you, my friend. If not, we'll get you more. So their place, their placement is 100%, but many of them only knew Intel when they first got into it. So we hope that they will still come online as a partner, but candidly, we're talking three to five years, and there's a lot more need beyond that. So again, when you're talking about this, we would infrastructure for that design, that kind of journalist, engineering component that can go in multiple directions. If, again, we started to rethink the program here.
So it's in Newark now?
It is. And the reason that it's particularly right now in Newark only is because of that massive amount of laboratory space that had to go with it. We're also kind of conjoining with Ohio State Newark. They have a bachelor's in technical education, which is interesting, it's their first one in engineering. So we've kind of conjoined with them and learned from that process. We have ordered a lot of our equipment that is portable on purpose so that we can pick it up and bring it to the extended campus, so that we can do a lot more of that on-site. You know, it was purposeful when we decided to do that. A very good question. Any other questions for right now? I think we have a special guest for you before you go, so you're not going anywhere quite yet, and I'm going to keep talking to make sure I think our special guest is coming. And I want to seriously thank each and every one of you for coming today. Almost all of you I know individually, and I appreciate that. If I haven't had the chance to get to know you, come and see me. We would love to get to know each other a little bit more. I would tell you right now, the college is primed and in a very good position, but there are a lot of environmental influences, and there are a lot of people and things that are very important to us in order to get us there. So many of you may have already had the chance to see our campus mascot. This is TC, the catalyst, and this is very purposeful. We wanted to kind of share this with you. Our students are catalysts. They are adapters to change. They are innovators, they are creators for themselves and their communities. It's very important for us to recognize them that way and to serve in that capacity, as are almost every one of you in this room. You are catalysts for engagement, change, and evolution. We need to partner with you. This is a physical manifestation of this, and TC has been great.